I call this meeting to order. This meeting is held on video conference following our examination of the interior of the library. And due to the pandemic, it would be not feasible to have a full board in the library at this time. Hopefully in the future, we will be able to do it. Jennifer Rorgol, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krisham?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
I'm here.
Mr. Parzy?
Here.
Ms. Shu?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Frum?
Yes, thank you very much. Before I proceed on the consent agenda, is there any item do you would like to pull out of the consent agenda? Hearing non, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Abby.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sharon. Rorgol, please, Jennifer?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krisham?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzy?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Frum?
Yes, thank you very much. The consent agenda has been approved. Any comment from the public?
Again, if you have any comments, you can type them in the chat and I will read them out.
Do we have public?
We do.
We do.
Wow, it's nice. We never had them live. Maybe we should continue forever on this way. Okay, Jay, could you please give us a report on the EDC? If there was a meeting and you attended?
Yes, April 14th, there was an EDC meeting. So first off, we had new staff attending the meeting for the first time. So ran a little differently, but it was nice. Chan Yu is a new staff liaison to the EDC from the village. And he started out by reading or telling us a lot of statistics for the village on permits, retail vacancy, office vacancy, unemployment, sales tax, numbers that you might expect in light of COVID. So permits are slightly up for construction, retail vacancy is up, industrial vacancy and office vacancy are up. Unemployment, it's still up relative to a year ago before pandemic, but it's trending down from beginning of pandemic. Sales taxes are trending up, but they're overall down from 2019. And they talked about restaurant seating outdoors. And there are a number of permits that have been approved for tents for outdoor seating. And I think they're expecting to have a few more. They talked a little bit about the ongoing development in the village. Some of the key developments that were discussed were the Marathon Gas Station on Techne and Shermer. If anybody's driven by, you'll notice that it looks like it's perpetual interconstruction. Apparently that was to be converted to a 7-Eleven store, but 7-Eleven decided not to move forward with that project. And so mid-construction, the developers now having to rethink and try and sell the property. They can't sell it as a gas station in its current state because they removed the tanks before the construction was stopped. So they're trying to figure out what to do with it. It may sit in its current state for a while. They talked about on Shermer and Farnsworth, there's a subdivision. It's been there for about 15 years, but there are a few homes being built, still a few vacancies. Those are single-family detached homes. They talked a little bit about Granger, the village is getting ready to market it for sale. This is pretty much the primary discussion. Northbrook Court, so there's been a lot of discussion and articles on that. It looks as if the property is going into foreclosure. The village recently has considered or discussed what's going on with it. At the moment, the property owner has not informed the village of any pending sale or other activity. The village is still hoping that the development will move forward. But at the moment, they are not in a position, from what it sounds like, to do so. So their village is kind of waiting to learn more about what's going to happen with it. In terms of what was done by the village ahead of time to encourage the development, they talked about the Tiff District not kicking in and providing any benefit for developer until the development is complete. And the development agreement also has provision, it's to help protect village from providing any benefits before the construction is complete. So hopefully that will get underway and, you know, be improved. Five seasons apparently vacant and the village doesn't know what's going to happen with it. They expect there may be some interest in residential development that would require rezoning. Green Acres, the only thing that's been going on for that recently is the owner has applied for some demolition permits on existing structures, but there haven't been any new activity on the plan for development of the property. That was all they talked about in terms of the development. The village is working on a climate action plan. There's a draft plan that's been reviewed and in the process of being updated before it's going to be posted for public comment and then a public meeting to give comment on it. And one of the things I would point out is the village budget includes a line item that'll be for a position for sustainability coordinator within the village to help implement and see that the climate action plan gets put into action. There is a property owner or developer or purchaser that has expressed interest in applying for a 6P application on a property at 3401 Commercial Avenue. To present, they've only expressed initial interest. But the village does expect that if there's an application submitted soon, it'll be something that's sent on to the library and other boards in the next month or so. And the village is expecting that they're going to want to try and get some pretty quick action on it to try and move forward. From the description right now, and this is without any formal application, it's a warehouse building that has been vacant for a long time. And it's a purchaser that would be using as a warehouse and distribution center. The purchaser is expanding an existing facility into Northbrook. And they expect to have a number of employees over a course of three to four years that'll add it. After that, there was discussion by the different local government units, primarily in COVID updates and then just regular or general discussions from the different taxing bodies. I talked a little bit about what the library has been doing in terms of some of the staffing issues we faced, some of the changes in terms of programming and having to deal with the construction. I talked a little bit how the construction, even though it isn't intended for COVID, has some positive effects from racing the COVID since we'll be reducing one-to-one interactions between staff and patrons and providing patrons a contact-free way of checking out the books. In terms of the other taxing bodies, a part district talked about how they've lost a year of income from all the services that are typically provided due to not being able to provide services over the past year. There's a number of construction projects that they've been undergoing. Sports Center is going to be closed in the current season because of the ice rink construction and renovation. Meadow Hill will be open for pool. They've talked a little bit about the COVID protocols that they're going to have to put in place. They're not 100% certain of what that's going to look like, but they're in the process of figuring it out. And they talked about Annesberger being open over the summer as the Soul Golf Course, while sportsmanship continues to be renovated. The school districts, they talked, I'm not going to go through each one individually, but they talked generally about how they've had significant costs because of all the COVID protocols they've had to put. Everything from the distancing, the changing around of the furniture, putting in place some of the physical aspects and then just staffing, that was the primary spin driver that most of them talked about. They did talk about the positives, that there's a lot of positive interaction that's taking place between Glenview and Northbrook, especially for the school districts that have schools in both communities. And how the school districts collectively have worked together to do things to help each other out. One of the points that was made is that for graduation ceremonies this year, there's been a plan to put in place to use Rosemont as the place for graduation ceremony. So it'll be an actual graduation that takes place this year. And I believe all the school districts will be sharing that facility over a common weekend as opposed to doing it in Linnbrook North auditorium. A lot of the different taxing bodies talked about how their staff is increasingly becoming vaccinated. And so that's helping them to deal internally with some of the issues of staffing with COVID. So that was primarily from the different taxing bodies. The final discussion was about House Bill 7, which is another school consolidation bill. And there was some discussion about how it's once again being looked at at the Springfield level. And there may be some push to consider whether or not school consolidation will be beneficial from an economic standpoint. The general feedback from the school districts was for Northbrook, it's not likely to have any effect. If there would be consolidation, at least a positive effect. Primarily, they said the positive benefits of school consolidation come when you're able to eliminate some facilities that are not being used to full capacity. And in Northbrook, they talked about how all the schools are currently at capacity or near capacity. So there wasn't any excess capacity that could be utilized from one district to benefit another that has also excess capacity. So that was primarily the discussions.
Thank you. Any questions for Jay, please? Okay. Maura, you went to the ILA. Can you give us a report on your workshop?
Sure. The presentation was very good. I would say it was quite general though about, and not very specific about DEI as it pertains to libraries. So most of the library specific discussions happen more in breakout rooms rather than in the presentation itself. But there were a couple of things that really sort of stuck with me. One was that one library, and I didn't write down which one, they have a member from the community and a board member on the DEI committee. I think our library is doing a fantastic job, and I don't think it's necessary. But I thought it was an interesting way to sort of bridge, make a bridge there if we felt it was necessary. And then the other was sort of just a silver lining that the, because of the fact that we're doing programs virtually, it really allows us to to have a much wider audience. So where you might only be able to have 100 people attend, you can have more people attend, especially if you're partnering with other libraries. And it also sort of allows libraries that might not, it might not be on the radar to have a particular speaker or event going on. It kind of allows you to sort of bring them in. Because there were a couple of people who would say, oh, well, it's not really an issue for our patrons or no one's really spoken up about wanting to have more events that relate to DEI because, you know, we are such a majority white community. And then of course you have to point out the obvious, then that's exactly the reason why you do want to have the program. So that was a discussion as well, just more that you are able to sort of serve a wider audience. So that was just a silver lining from COVID.
So you recommend attendance to these ILA workshops?
Yes, I thought it was a great workshop. My only, I would say my only thought was that it wasn't as specific as library to libraries as it could have been. But it was still very good and very engaging.
Any questions for Maura? Okay, guys, don't forget the report for Cook County on all the money invested in Northbrook that you get paid out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which is not important. Okay, ILA, anybody plans to attend?
Would you like me to do the report, Carlos?
No.
Okay.
What is the status of ILA this year? Is it virtual? Is it?
It is entirely virtual. And the way that they're doing it is if you do five registrations, you get a six free. And we had five staff that wanted to attend, so we have one additional one that we can use. We can of course ask staff again, but we wanted to throw it out to the board to see if any board member would be interested in participating. There wouldn't be a cost because we have the free one because of the other five that were registered.
Is that the weekend before July 4th again?
It is the 20, Anna, do you, hang on, I don't have the date in front of me. Let me look, 23rd to the 29th.
Okay, do we have any idea yet what the program is going to be? Because maybe that's the kind of.
Yeah, I had sent an email out, but let me put.
Whenever you have time, just send an email to everyone in the board of the program so that they can pick.
There's, there's going to be probably like close to 300 programs. So there's just a wide variety. So it's.
We can look in?
Yeah, I had said it before, so I will resend that out.
Good, Kate, what I was thinking is it might be nice if you have the one spot that, you know, all the board members could attend some of the.
Oh, sure, so we could register.
I wanted to.
Okay.
We could pick and choose amongst us what was interest because I think for those that haven't been to it, it might be a nice introduction to be able to get an idea of what the programming is. There's usually some nice keynote speakers that come.
Yep.
To, you know, do book presentations, different authors.
And a lot of the stuff is recorded so that if you missed one, especially like with the keynote, you can get it. So I will, I mean, would that be of interest to people? Because we could just book one and then you guys would have plenty of time to look through and we could make a schedule for who could go when.
Yeah, I would definitely be interested in that.
Yeah, because it's a six-day conference, so that's a long conference, right?
Yes, right.
Yeah, so I think, I think.
I would be interested.
Yeah, I think I would like to go to, you know, maybe just a few, you know, a couple, but certainly not, I couldn't commit to the entire thing.
Yeah, okay, the way it works is there's usually about three or four days in the middle where you have the majority of the keynote that'll be of interest. Over the weekend, I think is a lot when they have some of the trustee programming too. Because there's usually some programs that are directed specifically to trustees. Otherwise it's general interest. Or, you know, different aspects of library management and issues that the libraries are dealing with that you may want to.
And there'll probably be an EDI track, I'm sure. That has been of increasing interest by trustees and staff. So they've been doing a lot more and more, you might find more that is like applicable. Yeah, so.
When we go back live, I strongly recommend that you visit the ILA meeting and take a look. And a lot of new technology comes on the floor. And the vendors are there and they can explain and demonstrate and things like that. Gives you a better picture. You know, you don't, you don't make the decisions, but at least you can get a better idea. So last item on this piece is t-shirts. Did you order yours? Yes, okay, that's the only compensation you'll ever get.
It is not compensation though, it is a marketing tool that we are giving to the board. Because we are legally not allowed to give the board any type of compensation. So you're helping us promote summer reading, which we really, really appreciate, and the reopening of the lobby.
You know what? The police in the Cook County and the state of Illinois is so underfunded that nobody's going to come checking if it is a salary or not. Anyway, would you please continue with the reopening plan update?
Yeah, I wanted to mention one other thing that on the staff reports, you know, Carlos was talking about the statement of economic interest specifically for Abby and Jamie. Even though you guys filled one out in your nominating petitions, you need to still do this one because this is reflecting your time on the board, which is always weird each election year. So just making sure that everyone fills those out.
And. I actually did mine already, if you can believe that. I can't, but I did.
Fabulous, that is fantastic. It only takes but a couple of minutes to do once you find your login.
Right.
Sharon, did you have a question on it?
I'm sorry, what, what is that for?
It's the statement of economic interest forms.
Yeah, I did it, I did it.
We're just killing you.
I found my password, yeah.
Yay, you guys are great, okay. And then I also wanted to mention, this wasn't in my report, but this week we did post the youth services manager job posting. Now, of course, I don't usually share with you when we post jobs, but I'm really excited about some of the things we did that we did a little bit differently with this posting. We specifically were looking at things through an EDI lens, trying to think of and work with Inclusion Nation, which is a company that is in the Chicagoland area that helps people make sure that they don't have any bias in their hiring processes and are strategizing to get the most diverse pool of people possible. And when I talk about diversity, I of course am referring to race and nationality, but it also reflects all sorts of different lived identities from people that might have a disability to, like for instance, one of the things we had in the job description was some walking. Well, we don't need people to be able to walk, we need them to be able to move around the space. So things like that to help us make our job descriptions and job ads more inclusive in our language and specifically calling out opportunities to seek a more diverse pool of candidates. One of the major barriers to entry for, for the library profession, for people of color, is getting the Masters in Library Science. It is an expensive degree, as are most masters programs. And so one of the things we did talk extensively about was whether or not is this still required? Is it needed? And we, there's, this is a very hot topic in the library world. So we did not decide to remove that. Some libraries have, but we did put in the job posting that we would seek to get candidates that have experiences that qualify them that aren't necessarily traditional. So if they've worked in library or in management settings and come from different perspectives and have different lived identities, that we would encourage them to apply. So Kelly and I were kind of using this as a testing ground to see what kind of candidates we get and are excited to see what we can do to open up the pool of candidates that we'll hopefully receive for not just this position, but positions moving forward. So we have posted it. It isn't up on the library's Facebook page yet. I posted, I know I'm connected with most of you on LinkedIn. I want to thank Kayhan, he already shared it. So please, if you have network, of course, many of you, of course, have, know a lot of people in Northbrook. So it would be great if you would share it with them and encourage people if they have interest or have more questions to reach out to Kelly or I. We're happy to answer that. We'll be looking at kind of, we're doing this as a test run. And then we'll be looking at applying this framework to future job postings. So Kelly and I are, are working on that. There also are things we'll do with the hiring and onboarding to make it more inclusive. And I'd be happy to talk in more depth once we've completed this process and have kind of some more data on how we did with it, if the board would be at all interested.
So Kate, you said you already shared it, so if I go on LinkedIn, I'll see it and I can reshare it, right?
Yeah, yep, exactly. And then if you want to share on Facebook, Linda, I think, said she's going to be posting it tomorrow there, so.
Are you going to continue with the reopening plan?
Sure. So I included a lot of information about the reopening. As Jay reported from the EDC meeting, we do have a lot of our staff that are getting vaccinated. Just to remind you, we did not make this mandatory, but we did strongly encourage staff to get vaccinated. And I'm happy to report that 96% of our staff have chosen to go that route. So 102 out of 106 staff are either, you know, everyone has gotten their first dose. Right now, we're at about 40% have received their second dose. Many, 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 oh, actually, no, today's Thursday. Closer to 70% have received their second dose as of today. Of course, by the CDC guidelines, there's another two weeks after the second dose before you're considered fully vaccinated. We have a few people that will be getting their second dose still in the coming weeks. But by the next board meeting, everyone on staff that wanted to be vaccinated will be vaccinated, which is great news. We're just waiting now for the CDC to release some information about how to apply safety protocols to work environments. So currently they have metrics on what to do if you're fully vaccinated living at home, but they haven't applied that to the work environment. So we're still going based on the safety protocols that the Illinois Department of Public Health, DCEO and CDC have in place for workplaces. But supposedly the CDC is working on some, and so hopefully that will happen soon. Usually they post something and then Illinois kind of does a mock-up of that. So we will be anxiously looking forward to that. With, in terms of services, we are, we have been slowly adding things back in as we can. As you know, as you know, Jay mentioned, you know, we haven't been hiring everyone that leaves. We've been focusing if the full-time position is vacant on filling that. But we currently have 14 vacant part-time positions. And so we'll be filling probably a couple of them this summer and focusing the rest on the fall. So some of what we do is based on staffing needs, but some of it is also based on, of course, a lot of it is based on the safety protocols. So we're kind of aligning everything around reopening the lobby. So construction is almost done. We need to of course wait for final occupancy. And then the, the plan is in the, this is the date that we've communicated to the public, is June 7th, we'll be reopening the lobby to full use. At that time, we will go back to full hours in the building. So we'll be back to 69 hours. So we were, from July to November, we were at 40 when we reopened. After we closed from November to February, we reopened at 47 and we'll be going back up to 69. However, we're not going back up to 69 hours plus full services. The goal is to first get the building open and then slowly add services as more and more people are vaccinated. So we've aligned the timeline that I outlined in the packet with the bridge to phase, bridge and phase five plans of the state. Those still don't have a ton of information and the state doesn't seem to be completely following their own metrics for when we'll be in those. Because technically then we would be almost ready to hit phase five and they haven't moved us to the bridge phase. So it is challenging, right? Because they, they do change things from time to time. So these are all benchmarks. The goal is a slow and steady reopening and expansion of services until we get back to our pre-COVID service levels. So we'll start by bringing in more tables and chairs, allowing people to stay a little bit longer, allowing a few more people in, although we've come nowhere close to our capacity ever. And our capacity is still under what is actually allowed. We will, in June, of course, we will also be having summer reading. We expect that while many people will still choose to do it online, we'll see more foot traffic from that. And that will slowly bring back in things like newspapers, comfy seating, allowing multiple people in study rooms, adding more computers in. And right now, we still have a lot of restrictions on who can use things. We have really restricted it to Northbrook residents only, including like our collaborative, collaboratory appointments, our study rooms, computers used to be Northbrook only. And so now we're going to be expanding that, assuming that we don't have of course a setback with a huge spike in numbers or anything, or the state moves us back to an earlier phase. I don't think that that will happen, but we will be moving towards, you know, increasing for outside of Northbrook as well. Once we are satisfied that we've been able to meet all of the needs of Northbrook. And then in August, we're going to start getting ready to hopefully have the Friends Bookshop reopen. I'm going to be meeting with them in, I keep thinking it's March, we're in April. I'm meeting with them in early May, they're having a meeting outside in person. And so we'll be talking about that to hopefully see what safely we can do to bring them back in. They haven't been in for over a year, so there's plenty to go through. I know people are very eager to get rid of some of their books that they'd like to donate. I heard from someone's wife today that they have a box of books that they'd like to get rid of that's in their home. So I certainly appreciate that and we hear that quite a bit. But want, need to have the people there to sort through them. And so we're hoping of course to first allow donations, get things in order and then reopen the bookshop. All dependent on what the Friends capability is as well. And then in September, we'll focus on getting some in-person programming started again. By this point, we're assuming that we will be close to or at herd immunity stages and be able to, with adults, to clarify, of course, there is not currently a vaccine, although Pfizer is testing for 12 to 15-year-olds, there isn't currently a vaccine out there for anyone under 16. So the, the goal is to start small with some in-person programming and some outside room bookings for smaller groups and then slowly increase that over the September through December months until we get back to in-person. I'm not going to say entirely because we do anticipate that we will be moving forward with. With virtual programming in some form or fashion, or perhaps hybrid programming where we might be live streaming. So you can come in person or you can watch. We're still developing exactly what that will look like and we'll be working on that. So there is going to be kind of a slow ramp up and hopefully no backsliding, depending on how things go. And presuming that the vaccines continue to prove as effective against the different strains that have appeared as they seem to be. So there's still a lot of unknowns. And so we're being cautiously optimistic and moving methodically to start allowing more services and. More resources for the community. We'll continue offering curbside service and that seems to be very popular. We're looking into getting lockers. I know we had lockers before. This is something that I think only Jay, Sharon and Carlos will remember at this point, but. Those did not go so well, but now we have this like dedicated core people that have gotten, gotten hardcore about curbside. So we're thinking that this might be an option. So Anna has been working with Erin McKinney, our circ manager, on investigating. Those to see if that would be a good option. In the meantime, we'll continue doing curbside.
People are also more comfortable with the type of lockers used by Amazon. In many, many stores. So maybe we try with one metal piece that goes on, on a wall and. People have a code to open the case and that's fine. I wanted to say that I'm, I think that you guys managed the COVID so far in a very, very, very good way. And. How come we didn't have any problem? However, I am reading about potential regressions. And so in the back of your pocket, in the back of your jeans, you should have a small plan. What to do in case that things go to hell in the handbasket rather fast. And that thing could happen. We don't know. We hope not. Nobody's planning for that, but we should keep in mind that that possibility exists. Okay?
We already have that in the COVID action plan. Prepare for the worst and hope for the best, right? So yeah, we already have that. If, if all, if it all goes south. We can easily, well, I shouldn't say easily, we can successfully ramp back to stay safe for staff and patrons.
Good. Okay.
I think, yeah, I, you know, I, I just have to like tag on to that comment because honestly, you guys have done fantastic. It has been, I know for my company that, you know, everybody who works, it's like ever-changing and the dynamics. And I know you guys get so much pushback from the community. You know, people come up to me and say, my kid just needs a study room and. You know, understanding that the library has to be a safe place too. I, I'm just like in awe and just like leaving it up to you guys because fantastic job. And I think what's really cool and just to bookend this whole conversation is like you've provided hope for the community. And I think this reopening, regardless of what's out there or kind of nipping at our heels. I think that the library reopening is giving this community hope. And that's all we have now, right? Like this vaccine is going to work and that's what we have. We have hope now. And, and I think you guys are really feeding into that and really have your like pulse, you know, just understanding what the community needs. So thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Okay, how about if you continue with RFID or does Anna, Anna RFID and circulation renovation?
I'm going to do this one, Carlos.
Go ahead.
So we are, as I mentioned, we're close to being done with construction. We'll get furniture delivery next week. Final completion should be towards the end of the first week in May, and then we'll be moving all of the staff back into the space. Where, as I mentioned, you know, Anna and Erin are looking into the locker thing and seeing what we'll do with that. So we should have more information next month for you. We also have, of course, the reopening on June 7. You know, normally we would probably want to do something big and splashy. We know though that like we still want to be safe. So we are getting, Anna found some really good. Hands, mini hand sanitizers that will be encouraging people who are using our new self-checks to take. Kind of a little, yeah. So we hope that they enjoy that. But I wanted to check with the board to see, do you guys want to do any type of ribbon cutting with the lobby? Abby is like all in. Yeah, Abby, what do you?
Get out of my house. I'll do it. I am two weeks out from my second shot as of Monday, so I'm safe because we're talking next week, right?
We're talking June.
Oh, yeah. Sign me up.
I'll go.
I mean, will, will the expectation, Kate, that folks will still be masked indoors?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, we could do it outside, but it seems silly. It seems like we should kind of do it, like, you know.
Yeah.
All of us can check out a book. All of us can check out our own book.
I should be available, Kate.
Yeah, okay. I think it's exciting. I think it's great. And I'm always going to wear a mask. I'm never letting my mask go.
I mean, during flu season, shouldn't we go back? I mean, if we stop, like, we should wear it during flu season.
I mean, flu disappeared this past winter. I mean.
You know, they showed, I don't, they showed the last year and it was like all red. And then this year, the entire country was green. It was so amazing.
Japanese populations are accustomed to wear masks all the time. And I wonder if there is a statistic that describes the difference in infectious, let's say, you're the flu epidemic. Normal flu epidemic in Japan versus ours.
If only we knew. We could maybe have a reference librarian look up data on this. If only we knew somewhere where we could ask this question.
Where can we get data?
Where could we go to ask a question? I'll, you know, I'll ask, I'll ask.
I tell you, you know, I always go to Google.
Yeah.
I don't think that's funny, Carlos.
Oh, yeah. We've, we've all seen that meme, Google will give you 100,000 answers. A librarian will give you the right answer.
That's right. That's right, Kay. Exactly. So what I'm hearing is ribbon cutting is a yes. Do we want to do it on June 7th? Or is it easier to do it like the following weekend? It doesn't have to be the exact day that we reopen. Or we can go and send out, Jennifer could send out some dates and times and see when is convenient, the first week in June. Yeah?
Yeah.
I'm seeing Kay on that. I'm going to presume that's all of you nodding. So that's what we'll do. We'll send some dates out.
7th is a Monday, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
You know.
Okay, moving forward.
And then, hang on, I just have one more thing with this. I'm sorry. I wanted to show you guys, as you know, this was like pre-COVID. You guys had said we'd like to put a welcome sign in the lobby. We were going to, or welcome sign in the library. We were going to do it in the window. We didn't. COVID then happened, so nothing happened. So then we pivoted and are doing one in the lobby instead. And I wanted to share it with you so you could see it. We have a Northbrook muralist. So this is the current draft. We're still doing some minor revisions, but this will be right behind the circ desk. We have the, as I showed you in the pictures, you know, that kind of wrap, the kind of curved wall that she will paint this on.
I like it.
That's really pretty. I like it. And all the colors of the library.
Yeah, all of the flora and fauna are Illinois native. So.
No cicadas.
No cicadas. I know, you know, we could ask her to put one in.
I'm sure we'll see a number of them in a few weeks.
I know.
More than a number.
So, so yeah, so we're excited to be working with a local artist and think that this will be a really great way to welcome people into the new space as well. And that is all I have, unless anyone has any questions on the renovation.
It sounds like it's gone very smoothly. So kudos to everyone involved.
Kate, did you mention the issue with the server?
Thank you, Jay. I, yes, you're right. So yeah, it has gone except for one thing. So you guys may recall the fun little disaster in the Suez Canal with a couple of boats. So our automated material handler wasn't on one of those. But one of the boats that was, it was, that was going to be transporting it was there. So it had to finish out its other routes. Before it could pick up our handler and then deliver it. As a result, it was supposed to be delivered on May 3rd. It will not be delivered till May 24th. They have promised us that it will be here and in by June 7th. And that we will have all the training needed to operate it effectively and efficiently and everything will be ready to go. They did apologize and of course, they couldn't have predicted that that would happen, but it has to, it can't just like skip like, oh, okay, now we're late. So we're going to skip the next two places on the route. But the good news is, is that it is still coming. And should still be here with plenty of time for us to get it in, installed and get all of the staff trained on it before we open to the public. Worst case scenario is, of course, it doesn't get here and there's another delay. If that happens, we have an alternative plan in place where basically we will have. Book drops with bins as we used to. And as soon as it comes in, we will, of course, get it installed and start using it. I, I hope that that isn't the case, but we do have, you know, a recourse if we, for some reason, don't get it in. Thanks, Jay. I'd forgotten that.
Okay, there is an item there that you neglected to mention, the punch list for this Friday?
Oh, yes, we're going to be doing the punch list walkthrough this Friday. And so like I said, we should have final occupancy, hopefully by the end of the first week of May.
Okay, then next item is Abby.
Yes.
Or on the committee, nominating committee work.
Yes, so the nominating committee met to discuss the, the slate of officers for the, I guess, May. May vote. So what we have discussed and as a, as a nominating committee is for. And our recommendations are for President Mr. Glade, Doc Glob, how, now I'll say your name wrong, Mr. J. Globinger. For Vice President, myself, Abby Young, or Secretary Maura Krisham, and for Treasurer, Jamie Shu. And that is what we are recommending.
Very great. Thank you. That was a good job.
Was that like a celebratory thing?
Just learned how to turn off an iPhone. Okay, good job. Next business, resolution for Village President Sandy Froome.
I included this in your packet. This was a request made by the village. They asked all of the different units of local government to. Honor Sandy's decades of service. This will be presented to her at the May 11th meeting. With all of the other resolutions that the other village, the other boards in the village have passed from like the park district, schools, et cetera.
I need a motion. Motion should say to approve the resolution for the village president.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Maura second. Roll call, Jennifer, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krisham?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parcy?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
And Mr. Froome?
I, as much as I think that she deserves it, I must abstain. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, next week, we are going, next week, next month, I'm sorry. I was rushing through out the door. We are going to swear in the trustees. The nomination for the, the board officers. I'm going to pass over the baton to Jay or, yeah, unless there is somebody else writing their name on the. On the boat, on the ballot. And then we'll continue until Jay closes the meeting. We will review the closed meeting minutes. We need to do that every, what, six months? Yeah. And then the executive director, annual evaluation, that will be left for the next board.
So we'll just be talking about the process.
Yeah, that will be fine. I'll be out of it. And then approve the tax levy letter, which will be in Jay's hand by then. So. That's all for now.
Carlos, there was one other thing I wanted to add for next month, and that is just, we have been meeting via Zoom. And just to discuss whether the board wants to meet, continue doing this, which we can as long as there's a, you know. Disaster declaration or if the board is interested in moving to any in-person or hybrid model for the meeting. So we'll put that on next month's agenda to discuss.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to add to the agenda for next, next meeting? If not. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
My last motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Maura. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jamie. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krisham?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parcy?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Froome?
Yes, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.